So, welcome. My name is Kay Patrice Williams, Councilwoman Kay Patrice Williams. And also, we have Councilmember Scott Tonison that is in the back. Between the both of us, we, I'm Cordelia Green Valley, and there's a portion of Cordelia that Councilmember Scott Tonison represents as well. So, we just wanted to be here to answer any questions. We did a, Scott Tonison and I, and the Mayor and other councilmembers, a year ago, guess about a year ago, we did a heart-to-heart tour. And there were so many questions about emergency preparedness. And then, of course, you know, we've had some, some fire, wildfire type of, you know, concerns in this district. So, we wanted to just make sure that we had an event here, right here in the district, to answer any questions that you have. We have the best, I'm new to city council, so I will just say that we have the best fire department in the area. And, and they're going to be represented here. You're going to hear from our new Chief of Fire, Chief Sturdy. And you're going to hear from a superstar, our Fire Marshal, Stephen Conti. So, with that, I will be here until the end. If there's anything that we want, you want to talk about in the district, I'm here. Scott's only going to be here for a few minutes. So, if you want to talk to him, you probably want to step outside and ask any questions. But, we are thrilled to be here. We've tested, for those that are here and you have questions, we can, there's, you know, there's going to be times to answer questions and answers. But, I'm just thrilled to be here, and I'm gonna tag it off.
Good morning, everybody. I'm John Sturdy, the Fire Chief for the City of Fairfield. Before we get started into the safety part of the presentation, I just wanted to give everybody a brief overview of the services we provide at the Fairfield Fire Department, and a little bit of an overview of our, our fire department as a whole. So, Fairfield Fire is what we call an all-risk agency, meaning, I like to say, we handle everything but crime. So, hazardous materials, spills, urban search and rescue type things, in addition to fires. We also offer paramedic engines. So, anytime there's a medical emergency, you'll see a fire engine responding to that. All of our personnel are trained to the paramedic level, and we do carry all the same equipment on our engines that you would find on an ambulance. Currently, we have seven companies, six engines, and those carry the water, and then a truck company, which is the big ladder. And they're spread out strategically through the city and housed at fire stations. In the district out here in Cordelia, some exciting events are happening. We're in the process of building a new fire station, and that's going to be on Business Center and Sisson Valley Road by the new apartments. And that is actually in the process now. We just finished all of the planning for that, and construction will begin probably in early spring of next year with about a year build time. So, in the district right now, at Station 35 on Lopes Road, you have two engines out there, Engine 35 and Engine 36. Engine 36 will be moving to the new station. And so, we have the staffing for that station already in place. And the reason we have two companies out here is because of how geographically separated the rest of the stations are from Cordelia. Other things out here is, we just entered into an eight-year contract for service with the Cordelia Fire Protection District, which is the county that surrounds the City of Fairfield out here. So, the City of Fairfield Fire Department covers about 100 square miles. So, if you think all the way to the City of Benicia, City of Vallejo, Napa, and then to Vacaville and Travis Air Force Base in Sisson City, everything in between is, is what we're covering. Roughly, we'll run about 16,500 calls this year. Of those, about 500 are fires. So, and that's a mix of everything, from vehicle fires to wildland fires to structure fires. So, we're, we're a busy department, and I like to say we're lean and mean, but we're, we're definitely doing a lot of good and positive things in the community. And so, we certainly want to keep that going. So, during this event, Stephen is incredibly knowledgeable on all things safety. But if you have questions that aren't related to safety, about the fire department or the services we provide, please, we're happy to answer anything. That's what we're here for today. And with that, I will let Stephen take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Sturdy. Welcome, everyone. I first and foremost want to thank Kay Patrice for putting this together. Public education is something that's near and dear to my heart, our department, and everyone should know this is great information. Open forum, raise your hand if you have a question. There's no bad questions here. So, please, if you're thinking, somebody else is probably thinking it, we're going to cover a lot of material. The handouts are out in the back, in the back, if you haven't already seen them. Of all the information, we're going to go over and then some. I also want to welcome our newest Fire Inspector, Maddox Sanchez, came out to help. He's a future rock star, so if you have any questions, you can ask him too. Anyways, so, yeah, I've been the Fire Marshal here for six years, 30-year career. Our division is a four-person staff that we're responsible for new construction, existing construction, all your fire and life safety inspections, public education, fire investigations, and on and on. If you want to build a building, we want to have something to say about it, especially in our jurisdiction, and now Cordelia. So, I think this is an outstanding process to have. And again, I can't thank Kay Patrice enough. This information, everybody should know, because in the event, as you can imagine, who has to know and who's going to be responsible for probably getting yourself some type of, to safety or safety items you need to know? And that is exactly all of you. So, again, I'm going to just literally grab sheet by sheet, and we're going to cover this. Again, if you have any questions, feel free to just raise your hand, and I'll do the best to answer them, okay? So, let's get started. So, again, our first 2024 Town Hall meeting out in this area, and we might as well go over the most, one of the most important topics is defensible space, how to prepare your home. So, in our city, our standard that we request for our open space and vegetation management is 100 feet, basically, from your back fence out. What does that mean? We like, in a perfect world, your grass is no higher than four to six inches, and your tree, your ladder fuels, which we, branches that hang over, that fire can get into those, nothing lower than six feet. So, just go up to your trees, if you have them. Any branches that are hanging six feet or below, take them off. Mow your lawn or weeds down, is the best way I could say it, four to six inches. That alone increases over 50% of your safety. And if you look at your defensible space on this, and it tells you zones, zero to 10, zero to 30, over 100, good low flammability landscape materials, I could go on and on. The biggest thing you can do is just create housekeeping around your residential or your business. Combustible materials, trash, your weeds are too high, your trees or ladder fuels are hanging over too low. That alone will increase your safety exponentially, more than you can imagine. I do also want to probably dispel a myth. It would take a major, major act of the man above for a fire to come through here and wipe out our community. We have a really aggressive fire department. We have aggressive prevention, neighboring with our neighboring departments, Cal Fire. We're trying to put all that into play. And how you help us is by taking a look at things like this and doing basic safety around your home. So, again, your fire safety around your home regarding defensible space. Residential neighborhoods, for the most part, are totally fine. All our streets, these are, we have huge fire breaks. So, when people think that a tree in your backyard could take the whole neighborhood down, it's, when you, we're not saying we're diminishing that or ignoring it, but that's not going to happen. We don't live in, and not everyone, there's a lot of state responsibility in what we call wooey, wildland urban face area homes in this whole county. But like the city, for the most part, we don't have to worry about that. We just look at the outlining, open vegetation and management. And that's what you see on an annual basis. We have now sheep, goats, along with our mechanical operators, contractors. And our way of thinking, and again, it's not diminishing anybody's, what they may think's important, but we're basically putting a big, open perimeter protection zone around our city, and now hope Cordelia's right behind. But, that's our mindset. That gives us the opportunity, if that fire's coming over a ridge, we have enough dispensable space and a fuel break that we can make an aggressive fire attack and keep it down. In the end, I guess the best example, the LNU fire. The City of Fairfield didn't lose a fence board. That's a victory in my eyes, and that was all of us. That's not just prevention, that's not just suppression, it's all the stakeholders. You, us, Public Works, building, community, everyone. And that's the message we try to spread. So, again, this information's available on our website. I'll, again, I'll go over a lot, but just know that if you need anything, feel free to call, our information's out there. We also have some magnets at Fairfield, follow us, grab those. Again, if you have any questions, go to the Fire Department link, and then just follow the prompts, and you'll, it'll, it'll lead you to a lot of information, okay? Any questions on defensible space? Let me go over this really quick. This is Cal Fires. Are you ready? When this campaign in these places, unfortunately, a lot of tragic events happened. They came up with this, know your zones. And you can just see that we have two items, excuse me. Where'd it go? There it is. And then, prepare your home, same thing, this is more in-depth. But if you take a look at vegetation management, home ignition zones, landscaping and maintenance, roofing and vents, decks and porches, you can go on and on. This really plays into a lot of the wildland urban face areas, state responsibility areas. And what that means is, for SRA, state responsibility, are those homes are in an area that Cal Fire protects, and a lot of the times are more high fire severity zones. You can also go on the State Fire Marshal's website, just punch in fire severity zones, and you can literally see Solano County, and you can see what area we fall into or category. The, in the city, there's no, we're, we're not even, we don't even register for a real severity zone. Some of our outlining areas, Cordelia obviously is in a state responsibility and has a little bit higher, but just know that that's available too. Making sure I'm not missing anything. But, again, I would say if you do nothing else around your home, if you're not out in the wildland urban face area or a state responsibility area, just do general tree trimming. If you have areas that you believe are city-owned, send them our way. We follow up with our vegetation management. We're Public Works, who does all the work. We're about to take that over. And all that really means is, we're going to have more of a say on how we do our open space and vegetation management throughout the city and our respective Cordelia and any other areas we're responsible for, while continuing to work with our mutual aid partners in all the departments in the area, okay? So, moving on. Let's just talk about home safety. How many folks know how, how to shut off their utilities? Gas, electric, right? You better mark. So, smoke alarms. Do you know, and you've heard this, you've had to, if your kids should hear it, you should teach them. This is one of the number-one things that can save your life. So, some of the myths about smoke alarms is they never work, they don't go off, don't, or, you know, should I shut, sleep with my bedroom door shut? Well, that's actually a recommendation, and I don't always do it, but I try to. But there's a reason for that. So, if something did happen in your home, you want to teach your family that if you smelled smoke, smoke alarm's going off, you know, the, the idea behind a shut door is it'll be a barrier, number one. You have your windows, we call those rescue windows, and those are actually designed in a home for that in the California residential code, which I won't bore you with. But, those windows are designed, so if you have a child, yourselves, single-story, two-story, you should have in your mind an escape plan. How could I get out if I needed to? Could my kids get out? My kids, I have two, grown now, but since they were little, I'd always taught them, you have to, here's how you open the window? No matter what, if the door's shut and you hear dad scream, "Get out", you open that window and you get out, and you go stand in the front. Not sure they would have listened, but it was an effort. But the smoke alarms, I can tell you in my career, I know Chief Sturdy can, there's been more people that have perished because of non-working smoke alarms. It's one of the first things we go look at in investigation, was it an operation? You have hardwired, and you have battery-operated, or a combination of the both. Either way, at minimum, think of it like putting up your Christmas tree. Every year, change your batteries, if you have the older ones. If one goes off and you don't know, the little trick, go find the one with the blinking red light. That's your culprit. I've had windows open in my home, they've gone out for no reason. Sometimes, there's absolutely no way you can explain why your smoke alarm went off. If anybody's had that happen, I know it's happened to me. Sometimes, they can be faulty, or sometimes something come through your ventilation system, it just sets it off. I had a window open one time, clear day, clear morning, and it just sent the whole house an alarm. In the end, it was just some dust that came by. Point being, see the one with the red, make sure you change your batteries. Now, they have 10-year lithium battery ones that there, you can buy them at any Home Depot, Lowe's, I, I, that's just a few. Just make sure they're reputable, they have the UL designation, which is Underwriter Laboratories. They are a well-known, long-term, well-respected certifying agency, that that's what you want to see on a fire extinguisher, smoke alarm, smoke detector, smoke alarm. But your smoke alarms, again, where should you put them? Always another question that, they should not be within 20 feet of a cooking appliance. Microwave, your kitchen in general. I see, we go into homes all the time and look up, and you see them, and they got put there for whatever reason, but you're just asking for those smoke alarms to go off if you're quite the chef. The most important place you could put them, though, is right in the hallway or in every bedroom. First and foremost. So, depending on the size of your home, the layout, single-story, two-story, get them in the hallway, get them in each bedroom. It's up to you. A lot of the homes put them in every bedroom now, depending on the age of your home. But make sure they're operational, make sure you know, are they hardwired? Are they battery? Are they both? Are they the 10-year? Take the time to verify and just make sure they're working. It could save your life and the lives of your family, and it's the number-one detection device in every home in America, so I can't stress that enough. But anyway, smoke alarms. So, I'll stay on that, CO2 detectors. What are those for? In our world, full fuel fired appliances, furnaces. These, they have combo ones now. I recommend staying with a single-smoke detector. And if you think you have a furnace in your home, vacation home, somewhere, I've even brought them if I did an Airbnb. And if I find out they don't have them, I just pull one up and smack it up against the wall. These should be no higher than six feet off the ground. CO2 isn't a gas that raises, it's colorless, odorless, and it doesn't go, raise real fast. But you want to have this at a lower level. And again, I always say, zero to six feet up maximum. Same thing, near the appliance that you think might give that off. Not everybody has them. Smoke detectors are more of the major one. But if, again, think about, do I have a furnace in my house? It's, you know, could emit those type of, that type of CO2 or carbon monoxide, excuse me, CO. Very important as well. But just know, colorless, odorless, also can be a lethal killer if it's in high concentrations and goes undetected, so. Yes? What we call the, yeah, anything that could be fuel-fired appliance. So, if you're using gas, if it can have carbon monoxide, you'd like to have one. You don't see a lot of them. A lot of times, they're more beneficial in the older homes because of the furnaces. For now, you have your tankless water heaters, they're not really a big deal. And again, the smoke alarms are more important. But if you think you do have an older home, and there is something that you believe can create carbon monoxide, then definitely put one up. But it's usually the furnace, something that, like the old, you know, pilot lights, that it's not like your gas stove, which could still do that, but the smoke detector's the biggest one. You know what? I didn't bring the handout, but does anybody here have fire sprinklers in their home? Okay, so, this is something that, when these were created, residential fire sprinklers were designed to be cheaper install, so it wouldn't be a huge burden. But they're there to give the occupants a chance to get out, not to put the fire out. Completely reversed from commercial fire sprinklers. Commercials that contain it, give us a chance to get there and stop it before we have a large commercial building going on fire. Residencies, completely the opposite. What we call CVPC pipe, chloro, chloral vinyl polychloride pipe. And it's, I used to say, it's landscape pipe in your attic. It's a little bit more than that. But I'll tell you what, besides the protection, so you have your, what we call your hard lid, the shell of your home's built, your rafters, your, what we call type-five wood frame construction. A lot of two-story, single-story homes have their HVAC units up there. In the attic, residential code in California State Fire Marshal, we only need one sprinkler in the attic. Same reason, it's to control the HVAC, that's where the main fire. So, again, fire heat rises, and we try to get that sprinkler as high as we can. That's what we recommend. So, before, if it was lower, all that heat and smoke would bank down, and that whole attic would go like, be going like a bomb. We've seen them. The difference, the spray on a residential is flat and across, and then down, and a commercial's like an umbrella. Not that you needed to know it, but I'm going to tell you that anyways. But they're very effective. We have a robust system, water supply system in the City of Fairfield. In our world, that's beautiful. We work closely with our Public Works Engineering and Operation Departments to ensure our hydrants and our water supply is efficient and adequate, especially when we need it. But the residential fire sprinklers are super simple, and for you folks, you have your main, what they call your riser, and I hope somebody showed you that, because that's a responsibility of the builder. But we know that after your handoff to your brand-new home or the home that you purchased with that, there's never education, there's no requirement for fire or anybody else to follow up except the homeowner. So, it's one thing we've talked about in prevention, is how can we help that out? I'll just say again, if you have any questions, give us a call, and we'll get someone out there to educate you on just how the simplicity of, there's two valves, and if you follow it, your main plumbing's coming out of the ground, you have what we call a main shut-off valve. If you shut that off, that'll take all the, stop all the water from the, going in the house. However, we, those were designed to always stay on. So, in California, we require two valves. And if you look, and you should hopefully, have one off your domestic line. So, you can imagine, that's to keep the sprinklers on, and then you can still isolate to do maintenance. And in our world, all the safety devices are mainly just for that. Access and what we call ITM, inspection, testing, and maintenance. And that's for everything, sprinklers, fire alarms, fire pumps, on and on, any fire protection system. But back to the residential fire sprinklers. They are like any type of system, they're designed to make sure they're going to, the sprinklers are going to pop when there's a certain heat temperature, usually 135 degrees to 170 is in most homes, which that's not a lot. But just know, you have, a lot of them are concealed, those plates are rated. So, if you look up and you think, "I don't see a sprinkler, but I see a round cover plate", that's a rated cover plate that, at a, that temperature, it'll melt, the sprinkler will drop down an inch, and your house is going to be flooded. But remember, again, they're designed to get out, not to keep the fire. Even though they do a great job, they're not designed to keep that fire in check. And those valves are great to know, you should, every year. There's another valve up by a pressure gauge. And I, I apologize, because I know, if you don't have it, it's hard to even realize. But in the end, it's called an inspector's test valve. And once a year, you should at least open that up and let that water flow, and make sure your exterior alarm goes off within 30 seconds. If it doesn't, again, give us a call. And then, just, everything's open all the way on that test, and then slowly shut it. So, it should go back up and register, and on your pressure gauge, you should always see that gauge somewhere between 60 and 80. It's pretty standard in our city. But that's, that's a simple operation that you should do, and we recommend every year. You're going to see dirty water come out. Sometimes, you're going to like, "Oh, my gosh, I can't believe that." Again, without getting into code and hydraulics, there's a reason we left them to be designed that way. But if you're not doing it, please, you should start doing that. Just make sure the, where your discharge is, there's a 90-degree. You can buy an elbow at any hardware store, and make sure that's on it, and probably want to point it down from the house or yourself, because once you open that up, it's quite the stream that comes out. So, any questions on that? All right. I could have went over the, you know, we talked about wildfire, again, preparedness checklist. This is another good one to have. So, let's talk, we have a fire in the city, in the county, and there's evacuations that have to happen. Now, just, and we're going to talk about evacuation in a little bit, but wildfire preparedness, have a to-go bag, a ready-to-go bag, name it whatever you want. But you should have, ready to go at all times. If you get an alert from us or the county, it's telling you to get ready. And then, the direction's going to be time to go. I can't stress this enough, folks. Please believe that we know what we're doing, and just don't think twice. Get your stuff, and if the message is to go, please depart. Efficiently, effectively, but have a to-go bag ready. This is a great checklist. We all know that today's world, you can get on the social media, or not social media, but the internet, and you get more information than you could ever, ever dream of. The biggest thing is, right, your most personal belongings, your family, and then things that you think you would need to have to survive for a few days. We used to say three days. But, bottom line, have a to-go bag ready to go if there's an evacuation in order. We also can't stress enough about, please make sure you check the messaging, and don't assume anything other than what the message is telling you. Lot of folks in the LNU, and we learn from those unfortunate incidents as well. But a lot of folks, a lot of, like to spread us, again, especially today, false information, they don't know where it's coming from, from this, and again, I'll go over this. From the city, we use Nixle. That is what the message is to get out. In the county, Alert Solano, we're working continuously with each, all of us, to make sure those messages are accurate, strategized, prioritized, and effective when they're out. But make sure they're coming from a reliable source. Don't come up on a third-party app and just think, "Oh, they said it", because again, you know, everybody can make stuff up. Pay attention to the real, know what comes out of your city or the area you live in. And again, I'll go back over that shortly and a little bit more in depth. But your checklist for wildfire preparedness is something you should definitely have. Yes? I, I'd say have a go-bag in the car and/or somewhere in your home that you know you could grab it really quick and ready to go. It's a personal choice. I have one in my car, but that's obviously from what, because of what I do. But, I, my kids, my daughter, my son have one in their home, and yeah, they just told them, "Put it in your bedroom, in your closet, somewhere kind of safe, because you're going to have important documents or that, those are near". But, you know, from your driver's license, passport, birth certificate, if you have it, and then some just basic, you know, power bars, waters, change of clothes, maybe some personal hygiene, it depends, you know, I don't know, if you have family, I always kind of, I have a plan for everything, including friends that live outside the area. Hey, if this goes bad somewhere where I live, I'm coming your way. And it's just kind of a unwritten, again, you can build and make it what it is, or more than you want to than others. But the most important is that bag should have some just, I'd say, you know, hi, stuff for hygiene, maybe a couple nights of clothes, and then some important documents that you would not want to lose in a fire. Again, what we would probably do is, you get a shelter-in-place order. The evacuation is, you're going to have to live in an area that we truly feel is going to be threatened, like. The evacuation is, you're gonna have to live in an area that we truly feel is gonna be threatened, like seriously, um, homes that are gonna be threatened by wildfire, for example. Now, if we're talking about an earthquake, completely different. And um, a lot of the stuff I recommend, we have our uh, community cert team, community emergency response team. And that's another uh, great resource you can just pull up, ready, ready go. This, just cert in general online, and they have checklist beyond belief. And they have nine main items that they teach. And it has to do with uh, a disaster is happening and how you would handle that on your own before we get there. Because you gotta remember, in a big event, as great as I like to say we are, we have limitations too. And our priority is gonna be protecting like that outlining border in, let's say, a wildfire. Uh, major disaster, knock on wood, I think it's no secret, sooner or later, we're gonna get a pretty huge earthquake. It's just how it is. That alone will be the reason you should know a lot of this and teach your folks. The um, uh, state wanted to do a mil- have a million people taught the cert way when I first started doing it and took over as program manager five years ago. That was their message is, let's teach, teach people basic educational stuff, utility shut off, home safety, evacuation, wildfire, basic stuff to protect yourselves. Cause again, you know, you're gonna be the first and most important when it, this unfortunate incidents happen. Yes, ma'am? Yeah, we have uh, more than if, I mean, our high schools we could utilize. Um, Armio, um, Rodriguez. Last time I think about the LNU, the one thing is there was mixed messages and it was a little bit of chaos. To kind of give you an idea, when a major event like that happens, we activate our emergency operations center. That's gonna be at uh, fire department headquarters, twelve hundred Kentucky Street, right near City Hall. And then we converge, whether we're on duty, if we're off, we're all alerted. Chief Sturdy can make phone calls in the end, somebody's letting us know. If we're not paying attention already hear it, we're all converging to headquarters to open that and start that. Those are the things, um, and it's a great question. You have to be aware of the messages and don't assume anything. We had a, just to give you an example, I always tell the story, Paradise Valley, one of our areas of concern. We knew the fire was on the other side of the freeway. We were getting phone calls and it was shelter in place, don't go anywhere. In less than thirty seconds, I was being told while I was on, taking that call from one of our admin, that there's another person on the phone that the fire jumped the freeway and they're leaving and the whole Paradise Valley um, was evacuating somewhere, had buses coming in. Well, that's great, except it's not because we had no control, we weren't sure. And that's the stuff why it's so important that the messages are accurate, you make sure they're valid and that we're aware. Cause trust me, we're doing everything we can and we're making those notifications. School districts, we're making those calls and that message will come out as fast as we know. But we also want to make sure there's a need for it. And that's the mistake that we learned, I don't even know if it's a mistake, just another learning process. Uh, we're not pointing the finger, but whoever told them, they took that upon themselves to the best of my knowledge. And they felt that was the right move. The problem is, we have people going everywhere, which, and we can't do any accounting for that. So that's a struggle and that's why I say we're working on our messaging with the county ourselves. We can always improve and that's how we always look at. Chief, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, as far as evacuation centers go, they're really situational. Um, we do utilize the schools in conjunction with Red Cross, they, they usually will stand up a shelter for us. Um, but one of the things that during the LNU, we did have a, a school that was slated to be a, an evacuation center for us, that area lost power, so that no longer was valid. So it really depends, but typically we, we like to utilize schools like this because they have bathroom facilities, cafeteria facilities, um, you know, large areas that people could sleep in if needed. Uh, and we've used the salon of college before, so it, it, it just really depends. Um, but we'll get all that messaging out in conjunction with the county and the Red Cross to make sure that everybody's well aware. Um, other issues for, for sheltering, um, if you have animals, some will allow pets, some won't. Um, we have large animal evacuations for people that have ranches and, and farms, things like that. And so um, there are areas um, that you can take those animals to. Um, it used to be in the Vallejo Fairgrounds where they had the stables, but uh, that's no longer an option because they tore that down. But there is a volunteer rescue group that will come out and help you with, with large animals. Um, if you have it, I know that's typically a problem in Fairfield, um, but we do have some of that in the surrounding area.
Thank you for that, chief. Um, so let's just stick on um, in-home preparedness. So earthquake, again, a preparedness checklist, again, know where loose or hanging items that could, if they fall, fell in a good shaker, could they injure you, right? You don't want to be near there. We all know the stop, drop, cover, um, but same thing. Know your utilities. I can't say this enough and it amazes me that I know so many people that don't know their basic utilities. What am I talking about? Do you know where your main electric panel is? Do you know how to shut it off? Do you know what, how to stay safe, right? You have a sub-panel, some people don't even know they have a sub-panel. But the main thing, if you don't know, the main one you need to think is gas, water and electric. Go outside, verify, somewhere on the side of your house. And if you're standing at your house staring at your garage door, it's either gonna be on the left or the right, probably in most homes. Some are different, but for the majority, right? So, open your panel, take a look, do you have a lock on that? Some people do, some people totally forget. You come out in an emergency, I gotta kill the power. That's the kind of stuff we're talking, pay attention. If you're in a neighborhood or an area that you believe for whatever reason, you should have a lock on it and you should know back to like, ready to go, or in a safety moment, have that key somewhere. I know, no matter what, three in the morning, I wake up, I know I can go right to my little area. There's my key for that lock, I can open up my panel, kill my main power. Okay, I just killed my electricity, great. What's the next step? Does, do you know how to shut off your gas? So there's a valve called a petcock valve, that is the name of it, literally. And if you take it, you have to have a crescent wrench and you should test it. But if you look up on your meter, where you have your meter readings and ta- again, if you don't, take a look and today you can find it online. But there's literally same as a residential fire sprinkler. When they pipe those in, there's always a first valves, usually the shut-off valve. And it's usually about eh, quarter inch thick. And it's maybe ha- an inch, half inch long and it'll go horizontal or inline. If you haven't, you should put a crescent wrench, you don't have to do it, but just kind of test and see if you can move it. And if you, if, and that way you know, A, you educate yourself, but that's your gas shut-off. And you want to literally shut that off if you get in an earthquake. You know there was major damage, you're worried about leak, gas leak and electric. That's your second one you should know about. The third one is your water. Everybody has in the residential, it comes in from the street into a meter, there should be a shut-off. If, again, with you folks having residential sprinkler, it's easy, but not everybody knows where their main shut-off is. It's most of the time on your front water spigot. Again, you come up, follow that, you see a red, maybe colored blue, but there should be a valve. And if you've never done it, go inside, turn your kitchen sink on, bathroom sink and go outside and turn that valve, can, d- don't stop until you shut it off. Once you do it, go back in, verify, obviously if your water's not flowing, now you just figured out all three. I can't stress that enough, super important, especially if an earthquake happens and/or let's say we have a massive fire and you're worried about your home in general, you can't go wrong. The only problem though, with shutting off your gas, is if you shut it off, PG&E is the only one that's supposed to turn it back on. Now, I'm not saying you can't, but you're not supposed to. So if you shut off your gas, you should be contacting PG&E and verifying that they have a tech come out and turn it on. But obviously if you're at that point and a disaster is not gonna matter. Just know when you shut that off, do not turn your gas back on, okay? Now that doesn't mean you're a hundred percent clear because you still have residual um, in all of it. So treat everything like it's alive, even when you shut it off. And just take basic precautions. If you don't have, now they have so much safety stuff, it's unbelievable, but they have solar lights for everything and they're little, we have them in our um, cert trailer. And you literally pull them out of a box, you blow it up and it's about that tall and it looks like a candle. But it's a light and it can, and it acts as three things, a strobe, a straight uh, standard light and then a red light for in case, hey, there's an emergency, wanted to let us know, I need help. Again, so many items. My point being, know your basic three utilities, you should know how to shut off and shut on, or turn on, excuse me. Yes? Um, so let's say you might uh, have a faulty, well, let me back up. So uh, earthquake happens. Personally, they're all off, just in case, and then survey your house, survey the damage. If it's in that type of condition, obviously get out as fast as you can. But if you have time, it's a really good shaker, but your house looks structurally intact for the most part. Nobody has to be an expert, but I would at least shut my power off and gas, water, if nothing's coming out. You know, you want to keep like, I know we need warps. What if nothing happens and you don't do any, but I would just say in a good earthquake, I would seriously consider my power and water. Um, knowing that you can turn those back on. The gas, I'd have to smell gas to be worried about it. But if, again, if you think it's bad enough, I'd ta- I'd shut them all off. Other than that, if you do wake up and you have a ba- a smell of gas, and we all know you can smell it pretty good. Um, first thing, don't turn on any lights, don't give it an ignition source. You believe it or not, that truly can happen. Um, isolate, check out your oven, any areas, open your door slowly, get some good fresh draft. Don't use your fans. So I, your backslider, your front door, everybody out. Um, I know my kids are left on gas, they've melted pans and I one time woke up and I still remember to this day, probably twenty years ago, and the house was, it was horrible. And I remember just thinking, you know, deep breath, everybody out. Open, shut my gas off, found out it was right on the burner, I cleared it. I left, just opened all the windows, cleared it out, waited an hour. So it's just, the first and foremost is getting out. But if you think that you have any type of leak, if you can't find the source to shut it off and let, call the, the corresponding company to come out. But your electric and your water, you can shut off and back on at your uh, kind of your, where you feel comfortable. Is that, is that a good enough answer for you? Okay. The gas one's always so tricky because it's so, you just don't know, right? And that gas can go and those vapors can float all, everywhere and anywhere. And they usually stay low and they're, they're, believe it or not, they're seeking an ignition source. And I, we've, both of us, I, when I first started in the fire service, a lady had a barbecue inside her house and was cooking on her stove. It blew up, found the ignition source, blew up. She was killed instantly and four firefighters were injured at uh, different severity. One retired out because the burns, that was the end of the career. And we, here, a standard call for us, we're coming in, it could be, that's why we're really uh, cautious. But we're charging in, we want to save lives. And that's where we have to, and if, and if you've done that and you see us coming up, let us know that. Hey, I've secured all my utilities, as simple as that. And just think, water, electric and um, your gas, okay? Good checklist. Pat, yes?
I live in a home that's a little over fifty years old. And we checked the valve on our gas meter and we could not turn. And we did two things, one is we painted a wrench red and cabled it to the gas meter, so it's always there.
Nice.
So when we need it, but we could not turn that valve, so we called PG&E and they quickly came out and replaced.
Mark, thank you, I was just, that, you did exactly what I would have recommended. And thank you for bringing that up. Again, that's a perfect example, older homes, you find out, that's why I said, see if you can move it, because if you can't, it doesn't hurt, they're more than willing to come out and they want to know that for that exact reason. Again, things that don't get used, residential fire sprinklers, I think all the time. We don't have a long history, they only got approved in two thousand and eleven. And they're only good as any installer and we try to stay on that, but I always dread they're not really on a consistent uh, basis of just the overall flushing, getting the water moving, verifying if everything's holding. And that, thank you for bringing that up, Mark, because yeah, when in doubt, call the corresponding utility company and get them out. Panel looks funky, open, you shouldn't have any open wiring. If you have an exposed wire in your panel, no end wire nut, something to open wire, that's the kind of stuff. Bring in a professional electrician, make sure they're addressing that. Those are simple fixes and I know that we've both seen many panels that are literally scary to the point, we don't even want to touch them. So we just go for the main break off. We have a thing what we call lockout-tagout. So whether it's commercial or residential, if we come in and we secure your utilities, house fire, we will literally come in and lock out all the utilities and we'll ha- we have locks that are literally say that, lockout-tagout. But we know we're the only ones that can shut them off and we're the only ones that could turn them back on, aside from the gas. We still use the gas, same thing, contact PG&E, get them rolling. They're the ones who are gonna come back and verify. A little trick, if you think your meter or your gas piping is um, leaking, get a water spray bottle and just go spray around the um, couplings and uh, your meter and you'll find out really quick. We had one a house actually, here in Fairfield, um, in East Ridge, brand new, we couldn't find the owner. The uh, neighbors were complaining about a gas smell. Sure enough, right when you get out of the car, you could smell it, there's the meter. So I just happened to have a spray bottle, knew what we were coming to do and didn't take very long. It's on the union is what the actual term is and that thing was just bubbling out. Done, we know the location, PG&E was out, they got it fixed, but who knew how long that went on? So again, simple little things and tricks you can do. Um, but thank you for bringing that up. Um, I'll start, let's talk about our evacuation. So you have cards in the back, alert, Solano, um, both in Spanish and English. And then uh, the fair, follow Fairfield, but these cards are for you to know your zone. Okay, I can't stress this enough. We changed, the city-county changed to a new um, evacuation template. Started out changing names, know your zone, now it's called Genesis Protect, I think it's Genesis something else. But in the end, Genesis Protect, know your zone. Alert Solano is who the county uses, again, we use Nixle. But these cards are for you to keep, use the QR code and find out what zone your house is. So how, what do I mean by that? If you look at this, think of your Reps Fairfield, it's a gridded map. What we did, working with the county, PD's responsible for the city evacuations. Sheriff's Office is responsible for uh, the county evacuations. So they're really the overseers of this, obviously we have input. But the template, now if you look on your card, the goal is, scan it, find your address, just put it in, it'll take you right to the zone. Depending on your location, it might be SOL in a number, Solano, Fairfield, F, R, F I think it says in a number or just, but you'll know which one. And then you want to write that down on your card, on your refrigerator, keep it somewhere. What do I mean by that? If there's an evacuation, our model to stop the chaos, we try to grid it and keep it in more controlled areas. So it's smaller areas that we're looking, how it was designed. But what you can do for us is truly know your zone, that's all you have to do. And you might see, oh, there's only like two streets or four streets in my zone. That's not for you to worry, just know that. I know that I'm FR twenty twenty, for example. So if you see that come out on a message, TV, whatever media you may get that, that's when you go. Other than that, you don't have to worry about it, but I can't stress that enough. Pass those cards out, if there's no, you need more, we can get you more. Again, come down to Fairfield, get on our website. But please, if you could do anything else today, take a quick picture or uh, the QR code, find out where your address is and write your zone right down there and then just put that to memory. And that way you'll know if an evacuation, that's when you go. If not, um, stay put, we'll let you know. So, I wanted to also clear up, I'm glad I bought this. So just some definitions in case you were wondering. An evacuation order, that means there's an immediate threat to life. Order is just what it sounds, time to go, right? just what it sounds, time to go, right? It's going to be lawful, it's from us, and, uh, that's what we're working to ensure. NICSIL or alert, just make sure it's verified, but if you get an order, that doesn't mean, don't, don't question that, please. Um, lock up your belongings, secure utilities if needed, take your to-go bag, and go where you need to go and follow the directions. Warning, it's a potential, like it sounds, potential life threat, or li- uh, a threat to property or life, we're just, that means get ready. Shelter in place, pretty straightforward, but that's really important. When you hear those orders, we really, shelter in place means exactly that. Does that mean you can't go outside, you know, getting breath of fresh air, but again, just stay in hu- in your home, that means we have it under control, or we have enough, uh, information at that time to believe that stay in place is what is the best thing you can do. And as you can imagine, where it gets crazy is when everybody takes off and they just do what they want, and that's how we get congested. Um, evacuation's orders lifted, straightforward, hard closure, close to all traffic except fire and law enforcement. So again, you don't have to commit these to memory, I just kind of wanted to, if you hear those terms come out on a message or from, uh, news, media, TV, however the, uh, um, announcements made, just know that's what that means. A soft closure, close to all traffic except fire, law enforcement, and critical infant, uh, infrastructure resources, and then resident only closer, again, self-explanatory. Okay? Any questions? Okay, another one that's back there. Does everybody knows how, first, does everybody have a fire extinguisher, and then the second part, do you know how to use it? So our, our famous, uh, way, we call it the pass system, pull, aim, squeeze, sweep. So fire extinguishers are, I could go on and on, great material in the back, we recommend that everyone has at least one, two A, fi- or 10 B C fire extinguisher. What does that mean? So there's classifications of fire, your A's ordinary, B's flammable liquid, C's electrical, and D's metal. We don't really worry about the metal unless you have an old VW, and then we have to have a special extinguisher, put that engine out, but we won't go there today. The main ones are your A, B, and C, they're most consistent, and they put out all th- those three classifications of fire, wood, combustibles, electrical, and, uh, your cooking. So, cooking fires are big. A lot of folks don't, they, I don't know why, and I, I, I've seen firefighters do it. When you're cooking with grease laden vapors, the thing you're not supposed to do is ever put water on that. Turn off your power, and if you can safely, put a lid over it. You want to snuff out the vapors and the oxygen, and it doesn't give it a chance to breathe. Again, I won't get into fire behavior, but it's really simple. Fuel, heat, and oxygen are the main thing that has to, fire has to happen. You have a com- uh, chemical chain reaction, and now you have fire. Fire doubles, uh, in every 60 seconds, it doubles in size. So, your fire extinguishers, just have them. The rating, why I tell you the two A, 10 B C, and you can buy these anywhere from Home Depot, Lowe's, um, they're supposed to be tested annually, they're supposed to have what we call a California State Fire Marshal tag or sticker, and they're supposed to be serviced every year. Most folks in residential homes aren't going to do that. So I'm going to tell you, off the record, if you have them, it's a dry chemical in there. The two A, it, they literally say, it'll take, okay, if it's a Class A fire, wood combustible, that too represents a certain square footage that that extinguisher had put out on a, um, wood or combustible fire. Nothing more than maybe your fireplace. By no means does this turn you into pro- professional firefighters. The B, flammable liquids, same thing, so when you see two A, okay, I know it'll put out combustibles, B C, or 10 B C, same thing, like it's a level, a certain square footage of fire, but in the end, you're looking for that A, B, C rating, so you can basically use it on any fire except a metal fire. Um, the thing you want to be cautious of is that the, and I should have had one, do we have a fire extingu- Maddox, could you grab that for me, please? Locked? Okay. So, you know what a fire extinguisher looks like? So the big thing you're looking for is the yellow arrow is in the green. If it's to the left in the red, or to the right in the red, have it serviced. There's a chance, because what they do is, that's filled almost to the top with a dry chemical powder, and if you've never discharged it, I can promise you, you will not want to ever breathe that or get it in your home unless you have to. It goes everywhere, but it's good for a reason, right? But that dry chemical, so you have your extinguisher, you should take a peek at it, the arrows in the green, green means good, right? So the pass principle, you have, say your fire's right here, and you want to make sure you have an exit at the back of you at all times, you always have to have an escape route, but if you're going to use it, so you pull the pin, little twist, it should have a zip tie on it of some type, you pull it, discharge the pin, you have your extinguisher, you have your hose, a quick test fire to the left or right to make sure it still works, even if it looks like it does, and then a pull, pin, aim at the base of the fire, not the smoke, we, and then sweep, squeeze and sweep, and you're literally just spraying along that fire until that is empty. You don't let go, you squeeze that, and once it's completely discharged, if it's out, great, you're still calling 911, but you put the extinguisher down and out you go. That is a one-shot deal, it's not guaranteed, and it's really over a wastepaper basket, um, you should probably think about what you're doing, but you should have one. If you have a boat, you should have one on your boat. If you have a yacht, you should have two of them, and you should invite me and Chief out for that. Um, no, kidding. And, uh, but you should have one in your home, you should have it serviced, and then you think, oh my gosh, I have, I've had this thing for five years, I've never had it serviced. If it's, if you know for sure it's a two A, 10 B C, just take a rubber mallet, turn it upside down and smack it, so you break up that dry chemical, because that powder literally gets cloggy, kind of lumpy, and if you do that, it just breaks it up. But again, I recommend having them serviced every year. It's, it's a very inexpensive thing you can do, and it really could save your life, and it's a great thing to have. Again, near your kitchen, in your garage, um, and if you have older ones, and you don't know where to dispose of them, your local refuse company, Republic, will take them. If you don't have success with that, you call us up and come drop them off, and we'll take care of it, but, although we get that all the time. Yes, ma'am? Okay. Thank you, Maddox. So, perfect example. So you can see right here, see, everybody see where the, um, arrows in the green? That's where you want to see it. Zip tie, your, um, uh, little, uh, I, why can't I think of that, but your, um, that's what keeps it, so you don't discharge it, but your pins in there, your zip tie, and this is a state fire marshal tag that everyone, you can see that seal, and I'll pass that around, but what we look for in commercial buildings and resid- well, commercial, but we check them every year amongst many things we do in our inspection, but that's what we're looking for, and we're looking to verify that it's been done within the last year. If it's not, it's a violation. Now, we don't shut them down, but we recommend, and we see it all the time, let's get the company out, city included, we have an annual basis, they're coming in, they're servicing, these are filled with nitrogen, so basically up almost three quarters full with the dry cam, squeeze it back on, they charge it with nitrogen, um, these are hydrostatic tested, again, I could give you more information that you ever want to know about them, but these are super safe, you should have them mounted, three to five feet off the ground in your garage, um, in your home if you, uh, feel the necessity, but really quick. So, as I was stating, you would come up, I have a fire right here, I'm going to pull the pin, pull out my hose, I'm going to squeeze, quick discharge, make sure that it's operational, and then I'm squeezing and sweeping across the base of the fire, not the smoke, and I, and it, it's, I shouldn't say it's funny, but it's, that's why we like people to train, businesses that requested, um, you could, again, with all the media now, you could get it online, but it's a pass principle. Pull the pin, aim it, squeeze it, sweep it, and do it till it stops. Hopefully the fire is out, if not, extinguisher's down, and you are out. Leave the extinguisher where it's at, if there is a fire like that, believe it or not, it helps us in our investigation to verify a few things that we're looking at, but any further questions on, did that help? Um, well, let me see, the best way I could say it, there are so many companies, they had, I'll give you an example, they had basketballs, literally looked like basketballs that were supposed to be flame retardant, and you would throw it in the fire and explode, they just shut the company down, and, uh, State Fire Marshal came out with what we call our informational bulletins, that they stop right now, that applies to extinguishers, fire blankets. Personally, if it's not an extinguisher, I wouldn't buy any of that, because we don't have a history or any factual evidence that those truly, truly work, and what we don't want to do is turn folks into firefighters, because that's a false sense of security, and so I can say that I've never in my 30-plus years in this service, um, have really, uh, seen that even as a, something that's been a vital item to use, and I don't recommend them. Um, however, if you were going to look at one, that UL stamp on it has to be there, and when in doubt, give us a call, so let us do the fact finding for you, because I would initially say, uh, Kate Patrice, that I don't believe in those at all. Home safety, smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, CO, uh, detectors are probably more important. The fire blankets, Chief, can you think of any, I, yeah? Yeah. Anyways. Let's talk a little bit of holiday safety. Thanksgiving's coming, well, Halloween's coming up, but Thanksgiving, Halloween, Christmas, right? Super, uh, consistent messaging always, um, that we always do, your kitchen, I love to cook, we all do, but those are some of our number one reasons for fires. People are doing the, uh, cooking the turkeys in a giant, basically vat of oil, so grease laden vapors, that's our big culprit in our world. If they can kick off grease laden vapors, you're supposed to have a corresponding fire extinguishing system that could put that out. Your fire extinguisher's a good, safe initial attack, but I'll give you, in kitchens, commercial kitchens here, they have to have a full-blown dry chemical fire extinguisher system, even if the building has sprinklers for that exact reason. So if I can say anything, when oil's used, get water out of your mind if you have to control it. I can honestly say, I watched, when I was a brand-new firefighter in the station, I should not admit this, but I'm going to, um, we were cooking, and it, uh, we got a call, and the, uh, pot was left on, and a, a bottle of cr- uh, Crisco oil was on top, the heat was left on, it melted, the oil dripped down to the pan, almost turned the station into, um, uh, or the kitchen into a complete bal- uh, inferno. We get back, thank goodness, we got what we call code four, didn't happen to be an emergency, we come back to the station, and to the surprise of our eyes, smoke is blasting out of the back end of the kitchen. Station 20, Chief, Del Paso Heights, not Fairfield, Sac- Sacramento, my prior department, and we came off that engine like any other fire, in, in shock, but when we got in, the fire was contained to the oven, and you could see the oil, the bo- the container of oil melted, dripping, feeding the fire on a gas stove, and our expert captain, talk about tunnel vision, that's why I say this, he lost all his training, 20 years went out the window, and he ran and grabbed the pot, pan of flaming grease and food, and stuck it in the sink and turned the water on. It exploded, and he suffered second-degree burns from his shoulder and his whole right side. And so we had two emergencies, and I, to this day, I bring that up because I can't say that enough. If you're, eh, we all do it. We are cooking with oil at some point, something, right? I know I do. I always, and I teach my kids, my family, kill the source of power, and if you can smother it with a lid, even a blanket over it, which I'm not recommending, but smother it and kill the source, but don't use water. And if you have a fire extinguisher, remember, if you utilize that on your oven into a pan, you're going to blow that grease up against the wall, so that's why those, as much as I recommend, just be careful and have some training on it. And, and know, like, go to a class and see what if you spray a, a pan of fuel, when that hits, there's a lot of pressure behind that, and there, it's great, but it can shove that and spread it, but normally you're still safe with that, it's dry chemical, you're safe, um, you might get a little more kitchen damage, but, um, super important. So, cooking for holiday safety, your lights, I'm, uh, I'm Clark Griswold when it comes to lights, I want to light the whole neighborhood up, and I have granddaughter now, my kids, I was always that dad, and I love it to this day, um, but please make sure they're UL approved, they're not frayed wiring, they're not super old, and I, even when you plug them in, touch them. CF, let them stay up for a few hours, overnight, go out the next morning and put your hand in the light. If that light is cooking, take those lights out. Your lights should not have any type of serious heat. Warm's acceptable, but same thought process. If I have them hanging everywhere, and now I got all these Christmas decorations, and maybe I did it inside, or I got paper, or, you know, with all the things that are available, just think common sense stuff. Do I have a heat source up against a fuel source? Paper, I did it this, the other day, I have Christmas, the little Christmas, or, uh, purple and orange Halloween lights for my granddaughter, and I have some really cool, uh, who's the, um, Jack and Sally, the Disneyland, the skeleton, it's Halloween stuff, whatever, but I have these little, um, tapestry's hanging, and I sure enough came out the other morning getting ready to go to work, and I'm like, that's right against those tapestry's. Went right up, made sure that's not a hot light. So those are little safety things you can do. I personally, after a couple of years, maybe replace them. I know that's not for everybody, but those can be super, uh, that, that can be a, a quiet an ignition source, along with, please don't overload your power strips. Your power strips are not designed to plug 10 plugs into one plug and stack them, and stack them, and stack them. Know the rating, must say UL approved, keep, you keep hearing me say UL. You go in any, to your stores that you look for this kind of stuff, they'll be right on the box, sooner or later, just flip it around, you should see UL. If you don't, put it back, but, um, don't string your lights, two, don't stack them, utilize right into a power outlet, normally is what we recommend. Um, your Christmas trees, if you're going to get a real tree, make sure it's watered, and if you can go up, and I, I, again, I can admit, I've went through this, if you can grab and just take your finger against one branch, and those needles come off super dry, don't light your tree up, and I hate to crush your Christmas, you might want to try to replace it, or be really careful, always water, make sure the freshly cuts, don't get them too early, I don't care how much water you put in them, sometimes they're just going to dry out, but the lights and what you put on are really important, and the lights are probably your number one source that you want to be careful of. I love to do it again, and I don't want to ruin anybody's Christmas, but again, make sure those lights are, uh, in shape, usable, and not something that you feel like they're faulty in any way. Um, again, Thanksgiving, we, I can't really think of, and that, that cooking's the number one culprit for us, and we'll be the first ones to come over and sit down and have dinner with you, but we'd rather do it in a more inviting instead of an emergency, and again, just make sure that, uh, when you're doing those, if you're doing the, uh, big oil vats, be careful outside, away from combustibles, away from kids, uh, fire extinguisher close by, and when you're done, same thing, make sure you discard that hot oil, make sure it's cooled off, don't put the, don't take a hose and decide, okay, I'm going to cool the oil off, let it cool naturally, make sure it's in a safe area, away from combustibles or any other heat sources, and have a fire extinguisher. Let it cool naturally, make sure it's in a safe area away from combustibles or any other heat sources and have a fire extinguisher. Um, again, winter holiday safety, Christmas trees kind of went over all that. Again, I can't say enough, the holiday decorating, the more the merrier, just make sure, again, more handouts for you. You can also go to what we call the National Fire Protection Association website, NFPA. So in California, California has our own California codes for just about everything, as you can imagine. NFPA is a standard. So California codes tell you if you have to do it. And a lot of the times what's required and the standards are a guideline, how to do it. Codes are a must, standards are how you should. We, in our world, a, uh, uh, should and a shall, and then, uh, how you should follow that. But these are, it's a, they have more information on just about every topic. You can go there, just put in NFPA public education and you'll pull it up and you'll just follow the path and it'll give you more information. Great for your schools, your communities, neighbors, hand it out again. Let us know, we'll provide more information than you can possibly want and we'll be more than happy to get that out and distribute it. We'd like to, uh, with our division only being four and our weekends as a volunteer, but public education for us in prevention is so important and we can't do it enough. And again, I can't thank you enough, Kay Patrice. This is just huge and we want to keep this message going. So, um, any questions? 11:30, boy, we're right on time. What else am I missing? Chief, can you think of something you'd like to add or discuss that I haven't covered? Kay Patrice, anybody? Thank you. Yes. It's not bad, third party app, but that's just it. It's a third party app. It's good information, but I can't, uh, every, and that's a great question. But we take it for what it is. I have it on mine. It's not bad, but when it comes to factual information, make sure you call your local fire department and/or the county, uh, uh, office of emergency services, depending on where you're at. So a great, another great tool, but it's just that a tool. Um, and it's not always a hundred percent. I'm not saying don't use it because I, again, I have it on my phone. But if it comes to any type of orders, it's, it's just more of another notification that, uh, app. So yeah, not bad.
We received the get out notification, but we started asking, and we didn't get the PD's version until 20 minutes later.
So that's exactly what I'm talking about and we, and it's hard because so many people have done that. The watch duty app, and correct me if I'm wrong, that has nothing, we do not feed any information. City jurisdiction, NICSOL. County jurisdiction, Alert Solano, Eventbrite, you'll know it, it'll say, right? The, so the problem with that, and I'm glad you brought that up, is that's exactly why a lot of confusion and chaos happens is people listen to that and they take off and then PD, because remember, as you can imagine, look, everybody is at the same level of importance that we want to make sure safe. But we're, our, our, um, amount and ability to respond, like anything, is limited in our resources. And no one knows, especially a third party app, knows what our obligation and operations are. I can just tell you, that's why it's so important to get those cards and know your zone. Because the county, city, corresponding neighboring jurisdictions, we all put in a few years ago, more than a few weeks where we all sat down and literally worked together. These are how we want to, uh, um, split it up, identify because of the LNU. That was one of the catalysts among many. We always learn unfortunately, but unfortunately of disasters, but that I wouldn't, it's not that it's not a bad thing and maybe say, oh, that's just confirming what I think's coming. But until you get it from us, I just use that as a, maybe like a notification, like, okay, and then verify. Now, if you hear that, maybe reach out to the city or county and verify, but don't follow their direction.
Chief, I would just add, I, I think I have watch duty as well. It, it's probably the best one that's out there. But I believe it was the Roberts fire, probably the one you were talking about. There was some misinformation that did come through watch duty. So it, it's, it is a third party, it's all independent. But with that said, it, it, it is good, but just be careful. We're trying in the city with, between us and the police department of coming up with better notification systems. But the one thing that the police department will do is they will knock on your door and tell you, you need to leave. If it's, if it's emergent right away, um, that's usually faster than any of the social media releases because we're giving them that order to do that pretty quickly. But as technology develops and things improve over time, we're looking at some, some new technology currently that we think is going to be better than NICSOL and, and maybe even Alert Solano. But you know, as all these things go, they, they come with a cost. So, um, but, uh, the, the, the big thing I think though, they will be knocking on your door to tell you to get out if, if it's that urgent. And then the other thing the police department and the sheriffs do is the high low siren. Are you familiar with that? So that's kind of that European sounding siren. Um, if you hear that in your neighborhood, that's a, um, sign to evacuate.
Have a working, thank you, chief. You know, have your phones charged, make sure they're operational. Have a working radio, maybe solar powered one or backup. Again, to, just to that point, just make sure you have some source of, that you can receive or hopefully receive factual information, because it, again, it is, it's a great app. You hear, we both have it, but it's just another source or tool that we use. Um, and our county sheriffs and city, uh, police department, you can imagine when an event, everybody, and rightly so is concerned. So trying to grid and control an evacuation. There's not a lot of one way in, one way out neighborhoods, but we have them. And when we have mass panic and folks aren't paying attention, that's where we can end up in big congestors. Everybody screaming at us, why did you do this? And there's, just creates to the panic. As hard as it is sometimes, I just, I can't, uh, stress it enough. We're the subject matter experts and we are doing this 24/7, 365. We are know and believe in what maybe might seem a priority others isn't in our mind. We're not diminishing it. I just have to say, you gotta trust us. We've done it for a while and we're continuing and chief just allude, we're always looking at, uh, advancing, progressing with social or media, technology, whatever we can. But I can't stress it enough, back to that, make sure the, uh, uh, message is from a reputable source. It's only going to come for two, it's either the city or county. May, and, and if you don't, just, it's not, doesn't mean don't be ready to go, but yeah. Good question. Anybody else, anything, anything? We didn't, we had fire, summertime safety, so I was going to go over that real quick. Summer's over, doesn't seem like it, but, um, I will say fire season, fires year round. So thank you, Mark. We just, there's no, the season, there's no more season, it's always. How do we approach it in the city? And now our, uh, new jurisdiction, uh, Cordelia is we look at that, our, now our city abatement and open space management starts around, depending on the weather, April, March, April, last, this year it was May due to the weather. But we try to have everything abated that we feel is high priority by, uh, July 1st. Um, as you saw, now we have, uh, sheep and goats, they're super effective, we're always trying to build on that. You know, in the city jurisdiction, fireworks are not tolerated, there's zero. People say, yeah, why does it look like World War III every year? Because it, to, to have the staff and follow that, it just hasn't, it's, right now, we don't have the staff. And it's not an effective resource to go after that. Many, they have, um, social, or what is it? Um, social host, not, something host. Yeah, but, and, and they had it where if you, somebody lights a firework on your property and they, and they're the ones, if it was on your property, we could just ticket the owner. And other surrounding, um, cities have done that. The city right now is taking the stance that fireworks are illegal. Obviously if we see or catch someone, they'll be, uh, cited, arrested based on the severity. Just know that during the summer, we don't recommend, go to a professional show, do your best to spread that word. Everybody knows that cities doesn't tolerate it. I don't have a great response other than we, maybe one day we'll put a task force and have the time to go after those folks. But more importantly, that's why you protect your home with the, uh, defensible space. Keep it clean, do your best, keep your combustibles and, uh, area clean and tell your neighbors, uh, let's share in that. The one thing I didn't talk about that we haven't done, that Cordelia has done with the Green Fires Safe Council, we have a thing called Fire Wise. If you're interested, reach out to me, I'll put you in contact. And what that is, is same thing, best practices, it's done through NFPA. But what you do is if you get your neighborhood to buy into that, you take certain steps and they have a area responsible that will put you in or NFPA will put you in contact with. And if you do certain steps in your neighborhood, you'll receive a Fire Wise certificate and that could help in your insurance. So Fire Wise community is really good. Cities aren't too big, because again, cities, you know, we're lucky, we have a lot of things in place that make us a safer city, so we don't have to worry, but we still promote, want to do that. But Fire Wise community is through NFPA. Pool safety, I don't think I've told anybody here. Life jackets, if you're in a river, wear them. Um, I, when I remember when I first got trained in swift water rescue and just the knowledge that I learned. And in the end, what was the number one thing? You shouldn't go in a swift moving water without a, a life jacket. Simple as that, your life expectancy goes through the roof. And unfortunately, more than all of us have went on those calls and every single time, they didn't have a life jacket on. And I just burns in my head. So a little bit of water safety. If you have a home pool and you have little kids, have an alarm on your door, be responsible, have gates, know your children are around. Pay attention and make sure you take the adequate, uh, measures to have safety. Again, that little alarm on an access door from your side to the garage, uh, door, if you have little kids, lifesavers. I had them when I had my pool and I'll tell you what, my kids went out that and I made sure that thing rang all day and I made sure they got in swimming lessons, but I was right there and that's all you need. Compared to, we know unfortunately, people ignore that. And I'm just saying that's pool safety, life jackets, alarms, and just get them in swim lessons. Other than that, I think that's all I have for you today. Thank you, thank you, thank you all. Seriously. Again, Kay Patrice, thank you, outstanding. Um, I can't say enough, everyone that attended, chief, Maddox, all of you, thank you so much for, uh, your patience, being so attentive. I know that was a lot. I hope you have a great rest of your weekend. And again, if you have any questions, feel free to contact us, get on our website and we'll do whatever we can to help. Thanks again.